We'll call the meeting to order. It is seven thirty on Tuesday, November twenty first, twenty twenty three, the regular city council meeting of the city of West Liberty, Iowa. We have with us tonight interim chief of police, Don Strong, and city clerk, Sherry Hofer, and city manager, Lee Gertz. Also, we have city council member Josh Schultz, city council member Dana Dominguez, and city council member and mayor pro tem, Kara McPharren. Uh, I think council member Omar Martinez will join us shortly. Council member Smith is out of town. Can we have a, a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve agenda.
Second. Moved in second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries three to zero. And we have then the consent agenda with city council meeting minutes, the September sewer report and the October sewer report. If you had a chance to review those, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve. Any discussion on these items? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion carries three to zero. We have item four, Cliff McPharren, appointment to the board of adjustments. You see, uh, Mr. McPharren's application here. And the Board of Adjustments is the board that reviews requests for variances for zoning, et cetera. Is there a motion to approve, uh, Clifford McPharren to join the board?
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved in seconded, Mr. McPharren, would you like to share anything?
No, I think it's a very important board to be on, uh, both for consistency purposes and code reviews, so I'd be happy, honored to, to join the board.
Thank you for, for doing it, or putting your name in. Currently on the board is, uh, Bruce Browning, who I believe is also asking her to step down. Um, looking at appointing Clifford tonight, and then, uh, remind me who's al- also on the board?
Oh, refer this over to.
Uh.
I just. Yeah, I just didn't want to answer for. Yes, it is Katie Brooks, um, Mike Kessler, Dame Level. If we appoint Cliff, Cliff, and then Bruce Browning is outside of city limits, so he, we actually need to remove him and fill that with a seat that is within city limits.
I see, gotcha. Okay. So there was one, one opening then, trying to. All right, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries three to zero. Thanks, thanks again.
Yeah.
We have, uh, city reports. Hope you get a chance to review these. Are there any questions from council on these reports?
I was looking at the timeline for the hiring for the police team, and I was like, whoa, that went by really fast. We're already like in the middle of it. So good job getting that up and going, and I practically Sunday, Sunday, we already have applicants, so that was great.
We do, yes. Um, are we, are we running Zoom? I just don't see it up here.
Uh, oh, we're watching Netflix. We're on Zoom.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure there was on, if people were able to see us. That's okay.
From the HDMI or flips over to the main menu, but we are, we are live on Zoom.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was running for, for people.
Yep.
Sorry to interrupt, just you.
Oh, you're fine.
Dana?
Alright, that's all I had to say.
Other comments, questions? Um, Lee, is there anything you want to add briefly to any of these at all, or?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Uh, city engineer, Leo Foley.
Okay, got a number of things tonight. Well, number two, uh, the roofing part of well number two, or the roof of the, um, electrical, um, powerhouse. So we had four bids that BHMG went out and got, and they ended up only getting, uh, they sent it to four people, one, one responded. And that was, um, DC Taylor. I did make contact with DC Taylor, and they had no, nobody had contacted them good or bad, or whether their bid was going to be accepted or, or not. So we looked it over, we talked to them, we're gonna meet with them next Wednesday on the roof and make sure everybody's on the same page. We had them relook at that thing, we'd like them to get working on at least part of it this year, and that's what we told them, so. As of Wednesday, they'll tell us, there's one part of it that has a leak that's kind of in the well area, that's kind of held us up a little bit. So what he kind of told me is that he'd either try to fix that leak or get that part re-roofed as quick as possible. So that's what Wednesday's about. We'll have to do a contract with them. They, they provided us a contract. Says that one V and K designed, but they gave, provided a contract, it looked good to us, the, what they want to put on is really good, but we're all pleased with that part. Um, next, the next part is well number two. There will be a change order gonna be in front of you for consideration for the next council meeting, and it'll be for a mag meter, a magnetic meter for the well. We uh, took some advice from Northway and went with a propeller meter. You have a mag meter at your existing water plant at that well, the one out in West Liberty's parking lot has a propeller meter. Mag meters are a lot better, they talk to the SCADA system, so the operators will be able to see what's going on with the well minute by minute, and it's really the way everybody's going, so probably should have caught that and put it in. I didn't. I asked them for a proposal, Danny said he would like to have that same mag meter that they have at the water plant, because he likes the way it operates. So we'll get a credit of seven thousand, but the mag meter itself's about eleven thousand, so there'll be a cost of maybe four, five thousand dollars, it'll come in a change order. The next thing I'm gonna do on that change order, and this all just came about yesterday, today, so we didn't have time to get it onto this one. It's not a hurry for them. The next thing is the, um, um, the, the end date is, was the end of October, obviously they didn't get done. They've got, the biggest issue is the same thing on Rainbow, that controller for the lighting, it was way delayed. Now we have a controller for the well that we specified that you use automatic systems, which is the same thing you use all throughout your system. And they're just out, they're probably not gonna get that part until February. So we're looking at March before we can get that well up and running by automatic. Now they, they, they might be able to run it by hand in the meantime, so just that, that'll come in front of you next time. All right, so that's the well, kind of the well project in a nutshell. Naughty Circle and Rainbow, I'm putting those two together for they both need to do a lot of cleanup and get the, kind of the side of the road with black dirt and seed, it's way outside the seeding window. But you can have them seed dormantly, so the seed won't come up, so, and they almost have to do that anyway, and then they'll put like a mulch on top of it. I think we should do that. The risk we take is that the dormant seed sometimes doesn't come up as well, and we might have to reseed. Sometimes you have to reseed anyway, so I think on those two projects, I think that would be a wise move, and right now unless somebody tells me different, I'm gonna have the seeding quote, so it won't cost any more money, but have them do dormant seeding at this point. Um, some people would say, don't seed at all, just put, put mulch down. But that'll probably cost you more money, and we've had good luck with dormant seeding in the past. Keep our fingers crossed. So that's that one. Um, couple of big issues, uh, let's go to the easier one, Rainbow and Maxon. Next week, they said they're gonna start on the trail. I've been kind of pushing them, but they finally got the power moved over, the power lines are now down, they're ready to go. So next week, you should start seeing them moving on the trail.
That's one.
Next thing is Naughty Circle, the problem child. We ran into some bad, um, soils out there. Um, they hit the water, water service lines, they hit some electrical utilities. So they have given us a change order for both of those, because they feel like part of it is the city's responsibility, part of it is their responsibility. Um, I think letter of the law, maybe it's all of their responsibility, but as we're upgrading, the electrical has not been done yet. Um, John has asked for conduit, they didn't have conduit before, handholds to kind of change directions should be done that way. So there are some upgrades that they have a, probably a good case. We haven't worked it all out. Again, I just got the electrical one today. Um, and they, there's a lot of detail in there that all Americans had some time to finagle and move around, but we'd like to really look at it, get back to them, get the city administrator, get water superintendent, electrical superintendent, all on the same page, and come back to you at the next council meeting.
Oh, good.
All right, last one. Sorry about being so long. Lake Water Treatment Plant.
Fine.
We are, we have, we are surveying that next, starting next week. Um, they had a meeting at the plant with our engineers came over. Um, we are gonna have TerraCon doing borings starting next week. The thing about borings are the way the contracts read. We line it up with TerraCon, we tell them where they need to take the borings, how deep they need to take the borings, and then the bill comes to you guys. It's a bill of about, I want to say seven thousand dollars. Haven't even told Lil Lee that, but I got it. I got that, uh, I got that. Well, I called her about three bad things, I couldn't do four in a row, it was like it was always, everything was bad, so. So that'll be coming your way, but I talked to TerraCon today. I still don't know how our engineers are getting them over to your plant that quick. I've had them on another project where they're delayed, but for some reason, I think it's a different group, I think they're coming from Cedar Rapids and gonna get this one done. So they're, they're supposed to be there Monday to start that. But things are going great in that arena. That's all I have.
Excellent. Any questions, Mr. Foley?
Um, just the clarification, we will not be meeting on the roof because the city manager has a scare of heights.
City manager does not have, she was copied, but she does not have to be on there. But our inspector, I'd like to have the contractor on, I have been on that roof before. And I do understand that what that roof is, and there's, really, there's like three separate roofs up there, almost completely separate. And unless you're almost standing there looking at it, it's hard to tell him, I want this done, and these two parts can wait, you know, and.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I mean, just for note, the library utilizes DC Taylor for the name of our platform.
Oh, awesome, I did not know that.
Think so.
I know, I've heard the name, but I personally have never used them, so, awesome.
Good, good to know. Okay, is there any questions? Uh, when we move on to committee meetings, the employee committee met and reviewed this, uh, hiring timeline for the police chief. Dana, you mentioned already there. A lot of this has already, um, been processed through here as we go, kind of trying to get a jump on this quickly. Thanks to, uh, city manager Gertz for putting this together right away and kind of keeping this pressed, so we can, uh, um, move forward on it quickly. At first I thought it was maybe too, too compressed, but I think it's, I think it's gonna work really well, actually. Um, any questions about this lineup here from council? You will note, and this is important to note, that, um, we're planning to do interviews the week of December eleventh. And that's probably, usually looks like maybe, uh, a few hours on one day and then a few hours on another day, like if there are a few, excuse me, a few, um, finalists, you know, it might, I don't know for sure how it would be scheduled, but most likely it's like, say, two on one day and two on another day, so if you can just kind of keep that week a little bit, uh, free as much as possible. Um, please just cancel all your plans.
I know. Now the days.
And we just don't know, because it depends on the applicants, we have to work around their schedules, but obviously, we'll do our best to get everybody, um, accommodated.
In the past, it's, it's been usually in the afternoon. I mean, it could vary, not saying this is how it's going to be, but in the past, we started around three or four. It'd be after noon to kind of catch people after majority of the day, or more convenient, or before shift or something, I don't know.
Do, do you guys, you feel like you have a good handle on councils' availability, or like how their work schedules go, so that we can try to, you know what I mean, just know when to ask the applicants to, to come in? I know we can talk about all that, but just
Yeah.
if you need, okay.
And when we get closer, we will definitely reach out to.
Yeah.
Let you guys know ahead of time.
Yeah. Um, I did also, I, I met with the county sheriff today, and I did invite him to participate in those, uh, interviews as well. He is gonna be out of town almost that whole week, but he said that he would, um, try to send someone from the, from county to sit in with us as well, if, if we can work out the schedule. Yeah. Excuse me, I I also, um, invited the, I'm trying to make this as complicated as possible for us.
I love every moment of it.
I, uh, I also invited, uh, mayor-elect Smith. Um, I feel like that's important, as, as it is a mayoral appointment, and this will happen probably two weeks before the end of my term, so, um, he will try to join us as well, if he can. And of course, that's all dependent on that. Good one.
Did you hear about Ron, Ron's team management? Or whether they'd attend or be involved in the process? Or wasn't that part of the?
I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't reach out to him, actually. No. I think that might have been, might have been one, one that, uh, prior chief Whirling said was a part of his interview.
Oh, okay, maybe, okay.
So, like to be someone good to include next time. Any other questions here? All right, we'll move on. Uh, beer and liquor licenses, El Patio Restaurants. Is there a motion to approve their request for retail alcohol license?
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved in second to approve this, uh, liquor license. Any discussion? Keith Strong, do we have any insight about El Patio?
There hasn't been any discussion about, uh, a reason not to issue license.
Excellent. Okay, hearing no further discussion, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries four to zero. We have been about your claims. List number one, an amount of four hundred eighty-seven thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars and twenty-six cents, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved in seconded to approve. Discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to take time and point out that in our pre-panic list, um, we were able to, um, for Emily and Frank, um, as a part of the catalyst grant, you'll see in there that we were able to, um, get their partial claim filed, and so the sixty thousand that you see is the reimbursement for, um, sixty thousand dollars, and that is for the one oh three.
Yes.
West Third. Um, for that project, and so our next one, um, we have also, uh, with Ken's assistance, we completed a hundred percent of the claim on one fifteen, uh, West Third, or East Third, and that's a hundred percent, so you'll see a hundred thousand dollars on the December fifth claim for that. So the remaining piece of that catalyst grant, uh, will be when they have, um, the grant completed. And again, we were able to successfully get the extension of the timeline to May of twenty twenty-four.
For one oh three.
For one oh three, yep.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, oh.
All right, here, roughly, have we heard from upwards about receiving the funds yet? Um, okay. No, I did get an email from Jessa, and she's wanting to set an appointment to go over, um, all of the the data, and we also are working to try to establish, um, they have a couple other communities that want to proceed with the satellite. Um, however, it's difficult for us to communicate the process when we've not processed. Yeah, we don't even have the funds yet, so. So I think our priority needs to have that conversation with Jessa first. Okay, yep, thanks for asking.
Anything else? We have a motion and a second to approve. Claim number one, all of them favorites say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries four to zero. Better voucher claims list number two, in the amount of one thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty cents, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
Extinguished.
Motion carries three to zero with council member McPharren abstaining. We'll move on to public comments. Is there anyone in the room tonight with public comments? If so, please state your name or address. Mr. Brooks?
Ken Brooks with We Lead, one nineteen East Third Street. Just wanted to take a couple minutes to go on record and recognize, uh, some exemplary groups in our community that because of all of their hard work, put on another fantastic special event this past weekend. Uh, West Liberty hosted the Holiday Open House, which has been a, an annual tradition for decades and decades and decades, but this is only the second time where it's ever been a full weekend. We had a whole day Saturday focused on, uh, our real ta- retail shops, and then a whole day, uh, Sunday, which also focuses on retail, but provides a lot of the family-friendly events, so wanted to first recognize the Chamber of Commerce under the leadership of Charles Brook. He and his team did an amazing job putting that together, and, and they shouldered ninety percent of the planning for that. So, uh, kudos to them, but I also want to give a shout out to all of our city employees and elected officials. It was really neat. I saw everybody around this table over the weekend at some point, um, most of you multiple times. Council members out and about, working with, um, volunteering, uh, for the event and enjoying it with their families. And of course, Mr. Mayor did a fantastic job throwing the switch at the, the Christmas tree lighting.
That was fun.
Nothing caught fire, so congratulations. That's a sign of success, I think. Also, a special shout out to the police department. We had uniformed officers magaling with citizens, and
Yes.
it was really neat. This is super important, not just because this is providing an opportunity for families here in West Liberty to come out and enjoy our community, but we had hundreds of visitors coming in from the out of town. This was a perfect snapshot about what we have to offer here in West Liberty. So, uh, I would encourage council to keep that in mind and informed, as, uh, I'm sure the chamber will be bringing a request to do the event again next year. So I appreciate your support this year and ask you to support it again. Uh, the final group of people, uh, I wanted to recognize and say thank you to were the members of city staff that did all the hard work in decorating our lamp posts and the Christmas tree there before the holiday open house, but then also that did the hard work after the holiday open house, and everything cleaned up. And while the nice decorations are still up, um, you wouldn't have guessed that we had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people downtown because everything was spotless, so thank you very much, everybody.
Here, here, it really was. It really was a, a really nice event. Ken, uh, none of us could have said it better, our staff stand for re-sharing out that list than us.
I just wanted to share, Mr. Mayor, that was very important from my evaluation, that the tree didn't go up in flames, so.
The tree didn't go up in flames.
I see all the lights are working too, and so, I saw you got the lights working too, yeah.
That's thanks to interim chief Strong.
I was just gonna say, it was a team effort. Team effort, for sure.
And, uh, yes, the chamber provided us with a switch, that's, uh, that's, uh, fun, fun times. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. What's that?
I was just thinking about Lee hiding, because she was worried that the tree was gonna go up in flames. When you, when the switch.
Spark.
It's a, an evaluation thing if it doesn't light, and it's an evaluation thing if it goes up in flames, because that becomes a safety issue.
Uh-oh.
So, but all went well, and all was big fun, yeah. That would definitely have been one of the Netflix episodes.
That. Yeah, that would have made it, for sure. Tree goes up in flames. That's a fun tradition. Um, the tree going up in flames. I, I get how that sounded. Next here. Any, uh, any other other comments? Or correspondence? We'll go around the room then, council member Schultz.
Um, there's a couple things. And somebody kind of mentioned, I mentioned this to Lee Gertz, I meant to send an email and include it, I found on to, but the new stock signed down by dot, and kind of at the end, I believe it's Max, and there's residents down there concerned about, you know, people kind of running the subside.
Oh.
Just kind of, they don't want to see an accident happen, but their comment was they're worried it'll take an accident to happen to get some attention there, so. I don't know if it's like during the start of school, start of the day, end of the day, after school, but people just seem to be kind of flying there.
Were you talking about the Maxon Rainbow intersection?
Yes, kind of right where it comes down in front of the two Simpson Homes there, townhouses there, right at the end of that.
Yep, we'll make sure we get to address.
You know, married, I guess.
I guess that's a brand new stop sign there.
Yeah, so a little difference, I think it curves a little bit down too, so.
Try down.
At the end of the end, the change for people.
Right.
At the intersect, if you go further down, it's the intersection Rainbow and Maxon, it's a yield sign. So, and the yield sign actually faces, is facing, uh, down Rainbow, and the curve of Maxon actually has the right of way. Uh, and I made a suggestion that that be switched to where it, the Maxon, the, the yield, and the Rainbow be right of way. Uh, because if you curve, you come around that curve, you're not gonna see cars, um, coming, and you may, you may pull out, it may be an issue. So, it might be something to address as a, a safety, a safety issue.
Yeah, that sounds like a good, good thought, yeah.
Yes, I agree.
So let's take a look at that.
Yep, and I do have that documented, he came and he was speaking with me, so I have that documented to bring up only another community.
Great.
Uh, I did have the, the owners of the car wash over on the highway, let me know that, you know, I believe, they got in touch and um, they just shared their thoughts, I'm wanting to make sure they're I don't even know how to say it.
Slope of driveway.
Slope, and they're like heated cement, all the things are definitely on the radar for replacing that, but they're very on board with the progress everybody's making and, and the project's done, I hope, so.
It's a, it's a tough, tough driveway, because it's already steep, and putting a sidewalk into there makes it difficult. Him and I have talked, he's, he farms also, he wanted to wait till he was done combining, he is done. I'd like to, again, stand on a driveway with him and the plans in our hand and kind of show him, because not perfect, there is no perfect answer, believe me, I have looked and looked and looked to try to figure out how to, how to get that sidewalk, we pushed it all the way down to the road, but again, that's on a curve. So if you push it close to that road, it's dangerous. If you push it up further, it makes it worse on him, I thought it was on the back of his building, but we, we tried to compromise the best we could, and I just want to make sure he knows exactly what we're doing.
Right.
He see, like you said, he seems favorable, and he's very, very, um, professional to deal with.
Yeah. Good to hear.
Um, there was, um, discussion for something served for bunch of cats downtown, so I let email and um, Eddie, we just had them kind of referred to them, just checking with the different owners down there and work with them on getting results. I think they did, so, they got on it pretty quickly. Um, I'm not sure, I haven't checked with you yet, but the signs downtown, I know that they were replacing them.
Yep.
Were they all, um, were the hours right on there, or were we kind of a little off on?
But my, yeah, my understanding is, is that the signs are now consistent. Um, we, with the ordinance. Um, and so now our next step would be, is to move and talk about changing the whole part of parking downtime. So they're updated, so they are consistent. Um, but then now we need to move into that next step to talk about the actual downtown parking and about those hours. That's what I'm understanding.
Definitely a good discussion to have, because I know there's some business owners and building owners that they don't have really that's a spot for their upstairs renters to park, because they don't have parking behind their business and so on, so.
Right.
Yeah, and Clark Hopper and I have kind of shared some ideas back and forth. Um, likewise, you know, there's been some discussion too with the street superintendent. Um, because the big part of it is also with the street cleaning, and do we look at setting, you know, similar to the snow ordinance, just set a date, and we're gonna be cleaning in the downtown area to make sure that the cars are moved specifically to those dates or those times for that, but then still finding a way where we can allow, um, parking. Um, most likely, you're still gonna want to have some type of a timeline on there, because you don't want to, just no, no different than parking in the right of way alongside of the street that twenty-four hours. Um, because you don't want to get into a situation where you've got, you get those that are taking up, you know, the space the entire time, that impact on the commercial businesses downtown, so those are all those things that you can work through with the committee and, and see, and we have many other communities that, you know, have updated and changed that because of more residential, um, coming into your downtown community um, that has impacted them as well. And like we always say, it's a great thing to have difficulty parking in your downtown, because that means we've got a busy downtown. But we don't want the difficulty to be because we have vehicles that are not moving, or, you know, is creating that situation, so. Can we, is there any way, like, just now, because we're small enough? Just now, cause we're a small enough community that they can just come in and get their vehicle description and. Give it to the police department, so we allow those residents, almost like a temporary permit. I think that that's a, I think that's a good point, and I think that that's certainly something that we can. Make a part of that discussion to see if there's a way, like in other communities, or even if you have a private parking lot. That you have a special decal or a special permit that's in that window, so you know that that's a resident of an apartment there. But at the same time, making sure that that person clearly understands when they would have to move or things like that, so. But I think that that's, that's certainly a good, good thing to bring up for that discussion and. Munich and refer here to our police department as well, because they're the ones that are enforcing and monitoring it. And honestly, I mean, there's many times where we, I leave later in the evening and there's very limited parking downtown. And there's times where we come in early in the morning and it appears that folks are, even the ones that had been parking there overnight. It does seem to see that people are managing moving and we don't have a lot of. You know, vehicles that are staying there for a long period of time, other than just. You know, getting in the evening, going to the apartment, going and leaving back for moving, so.
Makes sense, and I'll have another.
And there was a resident that we almost say from all their naughty circle that was just acquiring about the. Property for the sidewalks and the pavement and the fence and. Let lead now, and she was already set ahead of me and. Already losing contact and.
For the right away purchases of the sidewalk, yeah. That's remember Schultz, you are. You have your ear to the ground in the community, you always have. Everyone talk to council member Schultz.
I just wanted to say, well, two things, one thing, somebody. Was looking for the agenda and didn't see it online, I explained that we just have to post it on the door, but. I don't know if it's on there or not, but.
Should be on. Typically, it's online as well.
It was sent to have it posted. Okay, so maybe they didn't get it up in time or whatever, but I need to explain that, you know, we do post it here. And that is our requirement.
Right, although typically it's, I mean, it's, yeah, there's some, something got missed if it wasn't online, it always is, but maybe.
And I haven't checked, my phone's almost dead, so I tried and then I was like, ooh, two percent. I'm not gonna kill my battery trying to look. So that was the the one thing, and then the other thing, I. Had a really awesome afternoon with Joe, who is the photographer for the housing. Study for Atlas Consultants. And I took, Paul and I took him around town to all the new developments, to, you know, some of the. More, more higher end developments outside of town, and he took lots of pictures and learned all about our city. I don't know if any of you were able to meet with them, but. It's pretty awesome what they do, so.
Very cool.
Yeah. They also said that they do a study on. Something else too, I'll have to remember what he said, then I was like. Ooh, that may come in handy later, but I forgot what it was now, so. I'll try to remember.
Yeah.
I do an email and it's more helpful.
Sounds like a good connection.
Yeah.
Um, just in line with council member Schultz. We did receive the cat information and concerns followed up with the property owner downtown. The property owner was very willing to work with the city, and so just as you said, I mean, Eddie's already reached out and they've got a plan in place to. But it also brought up a discussion for us to consider going back and taking a look at a program for stray cats and neutering. I know that prior to COVID, we had a couple of community members who had brought the program to our. To to the council, so I made a note to take a look again at that program and see what's available. Again, it's more of a neuter, catch and release, so hopefully you can can. Find a way for us to manage the population and and the sick cats and things like that, so.
There's a place in Cedar Rapids too that will, for like thirty dollars, you can take any stray cats there and. They'll, you know, it's a catch and release, so, and then. So if you do that, I mean, we can talk about reimbursing. People in the neighborhood that do that or something.
And then along that, I did hear from the Hirschmans and Subway on Rainbow and Maxson. The Hirschmans had come in, they're there in the corner house and they had some concerns about speeding. Keeping people now that the road is nice, that when they come in from the gravel, they're, they're coming at a higher. Speed rate, so they have some strong concerns about that, and especially with the. With the new housing addition and the children that, you know, the youth activity across the way they. They just said that, you know, they wanted to bring that to our attention to see, you know, if there was any extra patrolling or what we could do. They also asked if the city would consider making no parking signs. There's concern that, you know, again, with the roadway and because Dutton complex, so like they said, they're not against. You know, they love seeing the activity, but their concern is that, you know, more people may come along that street. Because now it's wider and it's, you know, a nicer street, so they asked if we would. You know, take a look at that, and then your other question was, and likewise with Subway was. Concern about the cleanup after the project, just wanted to make sure. That that was gonna be in place and that was gonna be done, and I assured them that is a part of. You know, our agreement and that we, the engineer and I would make sure that we. We stay in contact with our contractors and stay on top of that. Ms. Brooks did reach out and she reached out to Josh as well, and so we were able to get her. Funds to her for her right away purchase. And then I see then Mister McFerrin is here with us in the audience, so I believe that. Leo and Mister McFerrin were able to connect on that collection, so we were. Get that, yeah. And then final thing, we met with Brandon Harton, Melissa Stout and I met with Brandon Harton last night. We went over his concerns, his frustrations. We made some notes from that for us to learn from, and we've been able to come to an agreement to resolve. For him, what we need to do on that, and then Clerk Hopper and I talked about our next steps, what we can take a look with the policy. Of creating more of a disclosure to help folks understand, so we're also looking into some additional pieces on that. But again, if you happen to talk to Mister Carter, we, we came to an understanding, we're able to resolve his issue plus that, so.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We move on to item nine A. Discussion on appropriate action. On setting an agreement with Beanstrang Kim for city infrastructure. Located west of the city limits for annexation, so as you know, we usually should have laid requested annexation, which is in process. And. We're looking at extending some infrastructure out that way and perhaps maybe. Expanding annexation. Out that, that direction. Just briefly, do you wanna address that and kinda talk about what this? Action would be?
Yep, so Mister Mayor and Council, you have a picture that should have been included with your packet. I just wanna find out, so the blue box is representing the new. And so there on the north side of Highway six, we have additional businesses in that area that. At least one at the end has requested interest in with their new project. Looking at establishing utilities for the city, and of course, the consistency of this is that request. Can be done by annexation, it would also allow potential for those property owners. That we could look at, you know, a tip program, some abatement programs, so there's some incentives. There's also the incentive for, there is some of portions of that that are dilapidated and, you know. Somewhat. You know, for some folks, when you're coming into our community, it doesn't necessarily, you know. Look very appealing, so there's also some opportunities there that we can maybe work with those property owners. But again, before we get. The cart in front of the horses, they say, my recommendation through this council action form. Is to work with the city engineers, Beestreng Kim and Leo Foley specifically, specifically. To get to an agreement put together, so we can have a study to see what it's going to look like to take the sewer. And the water infrastructure clear out to that north end building. The vision here too, as well, is if you look to the south of there, that gives us an opportunity for future growth. There could be a potential for residential, and again, in addition, not knowing for sure, but. I think looking forward to that growth, we need to be. This is a great opportunity, there's another part of that too, for years, we've talked about what's called the west side loop. That was something that, you know, Leo and I discussed that. You know, it may be the time to, to consider looking at that cost. And to bringing in the water loop to come around to the west side of the city. To, again, preparing for that growth. I think unless you have any other questions, I think that's all my, again, my request here with the council action form is requesting to get with Leo. And get an agreement based on what we need to look at, and then that also allows. Mister Brooks and myself, as we're working with these potential projects and property owners. That way we can keep them in in tune to, you know, what the city's looking at and what our steps are in order to. Support that growth as it comes.
Questions, council? Briefly, Mister Brooks or Mister Foley, do you wanna add anything to this project, you're you're involved in this as well, or? No need to, if you don't want to.
I can, I can add just a few things, the, some of the infrastructure that we had talked about, we've got a lot of that kind of. On the books and we just need to. Kind of bring it to the surface and polish it up, some of it's pretty old, so relook at, the west side loop was done. Through water modeling, so we water modeled the city, and there were a lot of advantages to water quality and things like that to bring that loop in, so. That's part of it, and then the next thing is when it comes to annexation. That's not a specialty of mine, but Bob Meister is pretty well known throughout the whole state. As the annexation guru, he's done a ton of it for Dubuque, ton of it for West Des Moines. And he typically will do some of that. And work with your attorney, cause your attorney usually isn't up to speed on annexation as well as. Like a Bob Beaster who does it all the time, he's also an attorney, but. He doesn't take the legal role, he's more taking the engineer facilitator role, so. It's something we can put that together.
Sure. So my understanding of this action request here is that you would put together that agreement and then it would come back in front of the council. To approve it. Do we, is there a, you know, ballpark? Figure on what that would.
I'd like to, there's too many people involved, I'd like to, I'd like to have a week to.
Yeah.
Look through it and get back to you.
And that was, you know, this action is just being able to talk with Leo, so we can start that process.
Any further questions, council? Is there a motion to approve, that'd be option one, or wait on this, that'd be option two?
Motion to approve, option one.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve, that's option one on our sheet to move forward with this. This agreement. Laying it out, what it would look like. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, everybody, we have resolution, a resolution to accept and approve the annual financial report. And authorize the city clerk to file the report. For fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty three, this is something that's due by December first. And kind of outlines all of the financials that happened. In the last fiscal year, is there a motion to approve? Moved and seconded to approve, city clerk. Hope for, do you have anything to add, or are we referring this to? City manager Gertz, since you were the city clerk during this period?
So we're closing out the fiscal year. Again, our fiscal year shows all of our cash balances, our funds are in in good standing, you know, as we've talked about during the last audit. These numbers that we have in here are unaudited numbers, so there is a possibility as we're working through audit. That we may have to amend the annual financial report, but as of right now, these are all revenues and expenditures. As reported and a complete fiscal year. So it'd be my recommendation that we. Accept and we have the first file. In your financial report.
Excellent, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution, any further discussion? This is a roll call vote, council member Schultz.
Yes.
Council member Dominguez.
Yeah.
Council member Martinez.
Yeah.
Council member McFerrin.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, everybody, we're gonna move into closed session here in a second, so good to be together with everyone. And I'll accept a. Motion to enter into closed session pursuant to aisle code section twenty one point five C.
Motion.
Movement seconded to enter into closed session, the roll call vote. Council member Schultz.
Yes.
Council member Martinez. Council member Dominguez.
Yes.
Council member McFerrin.
Yes.
The motion carries four to zero, moving to closed session, happy Thanksgiving, everybody, happy Thanksgiving. Open session, any discussion? A roll call vote. Council member Schultz.
Yes.
Council member Martinez.
Yes.
Council member Dominguez.
Yes.
Council member McFerrin.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. We're in an open session. We're back in open session, do you need anything else? I said happy Thanksgiving, but everybody said.
Mister Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Motion approving city attorney moving forward with proposed lease and settlement agreement. And negotiate terms of such agreement with city manager and mayor.
Hey, we have a motion and a second on this action item, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, everybody, again, I would say happy Thanksgiving to all. Pleasure working with you, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Just a reminder that they all will be closed the twenty third and twenty fourth.
Yes.
For the Thanksgiving holiday.
Thank you.
Yes, motion adjourned, second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.